Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And I'm gonna start with a roll call of the board members. To my right, we have Mr. Joe Martinez.
Here.
We have a board member, Mr. Joe Ayala. And to my left, we have Vice President, Mrs. Nancy O'Kelly.
Here.
To my other right, we have Student Board Member, Marisol Angulo.
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 Here.
And to my other left, we have Board Clerk, Mrs. Dina Walker. Do you have someone for the pledge? Mrs. Angulo? Do you, did you have somebody for the pledge? For the pledge, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Sure.
Okay.
Place your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated.
Thank you, Marisol. Mr. Islam, would you like to give the report out of closed session?
Thank you, President Montes. In closed sessions, the Board of Education ratified the acceptance of the resignation of Certified Employee Number 1383915, effective January 16, 2015. The roll call board was 5-0. In closed sessions, Board of Education accepted the administrative appointment of Jeanette Martinez as Assistant Principal, Carter High School, effective date to be determined. The roll call board was 5-0. In closed sessions, Board of Education accepted the administrative appointment of Enes James as Assistant Principal, Carter High School, effective January 27, 2015. The roll call board was 5-0. In closed sessions, the Board of Education accepted the administrative appointment of Eric Sessler?
Sessler.
Sessler.
Sessler, I'm sorry. As Elementary Principal, KC Elementary School, effective January 10, 2015. The roll call board was 5-0. In closed sessions, Board of Education accepted the administrative appointment of Elonda Jackson as Elementary Principal, Frisjerald Elementary School, effective February 2, 2015. The roll call board was 5-0. That's all. Thank you.
Can the new appointees come up and meet the board?
Yes.
Congratulations.
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 Hey, congratulations.
Congratulations. Well deserved.
Congratulations.
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 So with that, do we have a motion to adjourn closed session?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have the adoption of the agenda. And an item has come forward to me to make a, an amendment or correct a typo. And that's for item reference KF.1. And that's the Memorandum of Understanding with the City of Rialto for Safety Resource Officers. Down in the third paragraph, it states a date of June 30th, 2017, which should actually in fact be June 30th, 2015. So, I make a motion that we make the correction.
Mr. Montes, K5.1.
That's what I said.
I said F.1.
Oh, did I?
Yeah.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna look at the record and check that out. K5.1, Memorandum of Understanding, the City of Rialto for Safety Resource Officers. And that's basically the, the date beginning February 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2015, not 2017. So, do we have a second to change the item?
I move, I move in second to change the actual date from June 30th, 2015, 2017 to June 30th, 2017, uh, 2015.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, but I, I want to point out, third paragraph down, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, the sixth line, middle of the, of it, it says 2016 and 17 school years. So, we need to strike that as well?
No, that, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, sorry. So with that, do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Still moved?
Second.
Do we have discussion?
Not much to discuss.
Okay. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we'll begin with our presentations. Marisol, would you like to do us the honor?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Our first presenter is from Carter High School, Karen Bustamante.
Good evening, honorable board members, interim superintendent, Mr. Islam, and viewing audience. My name is Karen Bustamante, and I'm the student representative at Carter High School. The new year has started, and we've kicked it off at a good start at Carter. We had our very first ever senior sunrise on January 9th to unite all of our seniors on that beautiful Friday morning. We had donuts for everyone and amazing music. Another thing, our, another dance is coming up on our way, and, and it's in our NPR. It's our winter semi-formal. The theme is, the, the theme is Fire and Ice, and it will be held on February 13th. Don't worry, we're making sure to give the boys the spotlight on the throne that night, as it is only our king's court. Also, our winter blood drive is this Friday in the Carter Gym. We hope to see 400 students walk through those doors to help save a life. And to conclude, I also met the mayor last Wednesday. I took a picture with her. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Our next presenter is Janay Wilson from Eisenhower High School.
Good evening, honorable board members, interim superintendent, Mr. Islam, and viewing audience. I am Janay Wilson, ASB President at Eisenhower High School. Currently at Eisenhower, we have been supporting our winter sports teams. Our girls' basketball team is currently undefeated, and as of yesterday, they're, they are now ranked number one in their league and number three in the Samaritano Sun Ranks. We are so proud of our team and are excited as they continue on, on with their second round in playoffs next week. This month, we also hosted a senior dinner where we informed seniors of senior events and topped off the night with karaoke and unlimited tacos. We would love if the board would come and join us Friday, January 30th at 4:00 PM in our cafeteria for our talent show themed Ike's Great and Talented. We host this to discover what unknown talent we have hidden in our nest. Our next big event after that is our winter formal, themed Emerald City. We are currently having a blowout sale for our winter formal tickets, which puts them at their lowest price of the year at $25 until Friday. Our winter formal will be held on Valentine's Day from 7:00 PM through 11:00 PM, where we will also have unlimited tacos and overall amazing time. Everyone at Eisenhower would like to thank the board for their unanimous decision to follow through with the construction of our stadium and fine arts building. Although I will be a graduate by the time the stadium is built, I am excited to return to Eisenhower as an alumni to see how our facilities at Eisenhower have improved. Ike is filled with school spirit and continues to grow, learn, and celebrate as one united campus. Thank you for your time.
Our final speaker is Edward Ortiz from Rialto High School.
Good evening, honorable Board of Education, interim superintendent, Mr. Islam, and viewing audience. My name is Edward Ortiz, and I'm the proud ASB ambassador for Rialto High School. And in honor of January, I would like to personally wish you all a Happy New Year. And because we not, we could not be together to celebrate it then, we can do it now. Speaking of celebrations, Rialto High School will be hosting our annual winter pep rally this Friday. We'll be honoring our soccer, basketball, and wrestling athletes who have made it their goal to score and pin every team the Rialto Knights face this season. Get it? Goal, soccer, score, basketball, pin, you know. But I digress. The theme for our rally is a new year in New York, and let me tell you, time score has nothing on a big reveal we have in store for our Knights. We will divulge this year's prom theme and location. Everybody has been trying to pry it out of me. Stop, not you guys too. These lips are made of iron, after all. I am a Knight. But if you stop by the pep rally, you will have all the answers you seek. This Friday, 10:30 in the Rialto Gym. And the celebration continues into Friday night with the epic alliance of Rialto's ASB and the Women's Empowerment Club, go ladies, who joined forces to bring the first ever celebration dance to Rialto High. Tickets are now on sale. Consider this a personal invite to join us, but I must warn you, there could be a dance-off. No pressure, might be adding a twist to it and partnering up. How about it, Lady O'Kelly? You and me. And to honor brevity, we have our spring blood drive coming up later this month. We had a huge turnout of our financial aid workshop this past week, and our Broadway nights are currently in rehearsal for a spring production of Grease. In the same vein as summer nights, I wish you all a good night and thank you for your time and support. Have a safe drive home, everybody.
That will conclude the DSEC presentation.
Thank you, Mrs. Marisa Angulo. Next up, we have a presentation by Vicenti Lloyd and Stutzman LLP regarding the fiscal year 2013-2014 Annual Audited Financial Report.
President Montes, we have a partner from, the audit firm is here to present our annual financial audit report. You as a board, you accepting the report. The report has been officially filed by December 15 deadline, which is required by the state. So tonight, you are accepting the report, and they will go over, quick overview of the report. The presenter is Tina Hanton, and her staff is here.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much for having us here. As Mr. Islam has said, my name is Tina Hanton, and I am a partner with Vicenti Lloyd and Stutzman. I have with me tonight Priscilla Osborne Flores, who is our senior manager and worked on this, on your audit also. This is our first year of auditing for Rialto Unified, and I am here tonight simply to give you a, a quick overview of the results of the audit. This is quite an extensive process that, as also as Mr. Islam mentioned, is required by the State of California. And it really does span almost an entire fiscal year, our entire calendar year as we complete the audit, as it's due by December 15th. And we begin very early in the year. It is very comprehensive. We, we review all of the funds under the district's control. That includes everything from your bond funds, your associated student body funds, your attendance. And we are also required to review many elements of both federal and state compliance, so there are additional procedures there as well. And as part of that audit, we are required to issue opinions on the financial statements, which is the primary purpose of the audit. And we are happy to report that we have issued unmodified opinions on your financial statements, your federal compliance, and your state compliance. What that means is, that means that you have followed all required accounting principles, and you've included all required disclosures, and the amounts that are included here are fairly stated. It also means from a compliance standpoint that you have materially complied with the, with the requirements of each of the programs that we reviewed. We did have many changes in state compliance this year. The, the Education Audit Appeals Panel was very busy, so we had new steps that we performed related to the local control funding formula, common core, unduplicated counts, and your Prop 39 Clean Energy. And so, we were, said, doing a lot of new steps this year, so many new programs were being reviewed. We also, as part of your federal audit, we review certain programs based on a, on a risk basis. This year, we audited three programs, and those covered roughly 78% of all of your federal expenditures, so quite a high percentage of federal programs as well.
Which three programs were those, I'm sorry?
They were the Challenge Nutrition Cluster, Title 1, and Title 3 were the three that we looked at this year. And also, on page 59 is another helpful page, that's just your general trends and analysis page. And that shows the summary of results from the general fund for the current year, the two prior years, and the budget year, which is the 14, 15 year. And it also shows your required reserves, which you have met each year at 3%. So, that's just a helpful page to kind of see the performance of the general fund over time. There were five audit findings, four related to internal controls, and one related to state compliance. Each of those findings includes management's response, so you can see how management is responding to them. And like I said, I know that there have been already, they've been busy working on those findings already. And we did have one prior year finding that we also report on, and that one has been partially implemented, so there's definitely been progress made, and they are, the, the current finding is also in the report, so. And that's really the summary, I wasn't gonna go into too much detail, but rather, Priscilla and I would just be available to answer any questions that you might have had.
Question, on the reserves, it, before it was 3%, correct? So that hasn't changed?
There was a time that it was allowed to be lower, but statutorily, it's always been 3%, and it continues to be that.
Okay. And I, and it looks like we were up there at CSBA, and there might be recommendations statewide to make sure it doesn't go below that, because, you know, unforeseen problems, and all of a sudden, you have negative reports that you have to file, you understand?
Absolutely.
Okay, just wanna bring that up, thank you.
Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Question? And this really is just rhetorical. In regard to borrowing, interfund borrowing, or borrowing to cover salaries, I just want to hear what your response is. Are we the only district who has to do that? I, I know the answer, but I want the public to hear it from you.
I, I honestly do not know the answer to that question. I'm sure you're not, but I do not know the answer to that question.
Okay, thank you.
May I answer to this, Mr. Martinez? As Governor releases plan for next year with LCFF funding, Governor tried to eliminate deferral, you're referring to deferral, which leading to us borrowing cash?
Correct.
Because state not paying the, timely, and we have to borrow that. So that, with the, with the Proposition 30, really help us get more funding, and with LCFF, the Governor's plan to eliminate 100% deferral beginning next fiscal year.
Great news, thank you.
Now, you mentioned in the beginning that you've, you've found that our district's been in compliance on all levels? Correct?
Uh, we have issued unmodified opinions on compliance, that is correct.
Okay. And we've heard that before. And, and it wasn't necessarily always the case. We just want you to know that we welcome you here, we know it's your first year here. You guys came in through a strong recommendation, and, and just know that, you know, we're watching. You guys are supposed to be watching our finances, but we're also watching to make sure, you know, that you guys are doing the best, when what's in the best interest of this district. So if any problems do arise, any questionable things are found, share it with the board also, not just with the staff, but also with the board. So, anybody else? Thank you very much, and welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Islam, on number three, we have a recognition of new appointment?
Yes.
Would you like to, would you like to?
Yes, President Montes, we have, at the last boarding, board meeting, you appointed our Senior Director of Student Services, Angela Bradley. She's here today with her family, I think her son is here. Can we recognize and have Angela just shake a hand with the board? If you please come forward.
Next, we have number four, Leadership Associates Superintendent Search Process and Timelines Presentation.
Thank you very much, President Montes, and members of the board. We're from Leadership Associates, and we're, we think of ourselves as the premier executive search firm in California. We do about the president searches in California. We are comprised of 11 superintendents, all successful superintendent, we're actual partners in the firm. And we've done local districts around you that you're familiar with, Fontana, Riverside, and Altaloma. So, we're very excited to be here, and we wanna thank you for this opportunity. So, we wanna do is begin the process of, of search by starting to, to explain the process, how the process works. We wanna spend a little bit of time getting input from you. We know how important this process is to you, because you want community involvement, and we will be in the community, collecting data for you as part of this, this process. We will help build a profile over a period of time. So I'd like to do is introduce my partner, Dr. Kent Beckler, who's a former superintendent here of Croninorco, Duarte, Walnut, and this one. And I was the former superintendent of Fuller, Chin, and Glanville.
So, good evening. We're delighted to be with you, and very pleased to participate in the process for the search for the new superintendent of Rialto. Rialto is a district that has enormous potential, and we look forward to working with you, and look forward to working with the community and the employee groups to identify the kind of superintendent, the characteristics, personality, and profession we desire to do next superintendent.
If I could just stop you for a second, we need to get a microphone over to your table, unless you guys would like to stand for the podium, only because on the televised meeting, if it's not sent through the microphone, they can't, can, do you have a way to move the microphone to their table?
We have, we have a headset.
Oh, okay. That was our mistake, so. Give us a second. Now, we're not gonna make you repeat everything you already said, but we can at least hear the rest of it.
As a former high school principal, I, I never had any problem having people hear me.
Well, I'm sure everyone can hear you in the room, but we have an overflow room, and then the people watching at home.
Thank you.
Good thing we have John.
Good. So what I'd like to do is, we wanna do a number of things this evening. We would like to provide you with an overview of the search process. It's an eight-step process. As Mike mentioned, we'd like to solicit some information from you about what you as a board are looking for in the next superintendent. We'd like to identify the community groups and the various groups within the district that you'd like us to contact, to solicit feedback. And then we'd like to finalize a timeline for the search, which includes both a, the community input day, the closing date, but most importantly, for the board, the candidate review session, and the interview timeline. What I'd like to do is just talk a little bit about the search. It's a, it's an eight-step process. The first step is our initial meeting with you this evening. And this is really an overview of the search. It's also to solicit information from you on the desired characteristics of your next superintendent personally and professionally, and it's to finalize the timeline. The second step would be a community input sessions. We would identify with your assistants and your staff's assistants, all of the various groups that you would like us to talk with, and Mike and I will be in the district as needed to meet face-to-face with these groups, to talk with them about what they're looking for in the next superintendent, what they desire, also to identify the characteristics, the strengths of the district, and some of the challenges that the district is facing. All of this information will be compiled and ultimately given to you as a board, and it's very useful information for you. It gives you an unfiltered view of what your community employees think about the district and the process. In addition to the community input sessions, we will work with your staff to attach an online survey, both in English and in Spanish, to your website. And we encourage you as a board, we encourage the community, each of the school site principals to put the word out that we would like to have as much feedback and as much input through this survey as possible. The survey, again, kinda goes through some of the similar type questions, characteristics, desires, that sort of thing in the next superintendent, but it's another way to reach the public. The more information we receive, the better for us to identify and recruit the type of candidate that fits for the district. And quite honestly, the more feedback we receive, the better for you as a board, because this is very valuable input for you. With the input received, we develop a position description, which really identifies what the next superintendent should be. And candidates who are interested in your position really wanna know- And candidates who are interested in your position really want to know about Rialto. What are the strengths, what are the challenges, what are the characteristics that folks are looking for? What do you want in your next superintendent? And we really tailor that to the district. These positions are high-level positions, but we're not just looking for a competent person. We're looking for a competent person who has the values and the characteristics that are needed for Rialto in particular. So, a candidate that might be interested in another district may not be the right fit for a district like Rialto. You want the perfect person for this district. Then we will advertise. We'll advertise statewide. We'll begin next week with the advertising process at the statewide superintendent symposium. We'll also advertise in publications. And then we'll begin to recruit. We don't wait for people to apply for the position. We will actually tap people on the shoulder, people that may not think about Rialto, but when we talk about the opportunity and some of the challenges that they would have the opportunity to participate in, we get them to begin to think about what it would be like to be superintendent in Rialto. And so, it's just not an open application process. There's a significant amount of recruiting that goes along with that. Once the position closes, you as a board will meet in a closed session and you'll have the opportunity to see each and every candidate. Everyone who applies for the position, you will have the opportunity to take a look at. And we will walk through each candidate with you. We will vet and do background checks on every candidate. And so, you will know from that group, you'll whittle that group down to the number of candidates that you'd like to interview. Then we'll have the interview date or dates where you have the opportunity to interview the, all the candidates. And then you will have the opportunity to then re-interview and possibly re-interview again the final candidate for your selection. Once you have that, you've selected a final candidate, but you haven't selected the superintendent yet. Because we encourage you as a board to not just base your decision on the interview, but to actually go to the site where that person is currently employed. And visit that person's district or work site. Talk with people about the person to do some checks on your own in conjunction of that person's school site or district site. And then we go through the contract negotiations and finalize the contract for that person. And then ultimately, you approve that person in a public meeting similar to this. And that's ended, you end the process there. And then you have a welcome reception where obviously the community and the board and the staff will welcome the community to the district of the next superintendent. So, that's a kind of a Reader's Digest version of the process. It's a very thorough process. It's very much tailored to you as a board. This is your process. We work at the, with you 100% all the way. You will make the final selection. Our job is to bring you qualified candidates who are vetted and well-positioned to lead the district here. So, that's overview of the process.
So, I think at this point in time, if you have any quick questions, we'd be happy to ask, answer any questions. Otherwise, President Montez, if you could have each of the board members share a little bit about their perception of what they would like in a new superintendent. We'll take notes and we'll begin the process of building that profile of what your new superintendent should come with as far as characteristics, skills, background, training.
Well, would anybody like to go first? Mrs. O'Kelly, Vice President O'Kelly?
Should we do paper, rock, scissors, or rock, papers? I wrote down, I wrote down several thoughts, things that to me are very important. And I have to say, number one, absolutely, for our district, this person has to be honest. He has to have integrity, he or she, I'm sorry, don't mean to sound sexist. Ethical, trustworthy, a person that can build trust, and must be humble. Also, the person must have a commitment to excellence and equity and an urgency for improving educational opportunities and attainment for all students. Must be an advocate for all children who will make decisions always in the best interest of the children. Must be an excellent, have excellent communication skills. Effective, strong communication skills are essential to effective leadership and effective teaching and everything else. So, effective, he must be an effective, he or she. Must be, have a history of positive work relationships with staff, students, parents, unions, and all other stakeholders. And must have strong leadership skills. Must be decisive, must hold people accountable. And must rely on hard data when making decisions and implementing, implementing programs and plans and accountability systems for the academic personnel and fiscal operations. Must have a degree of fiscal knowledge and expertise. And I think I have others, but my last one here would be, must be visible and actively engaged in the school and community. Schools, plural, I'm sorry.
Did you guys get all that?
And you can, you'll be able to email that list to me or provide that list to me.
Okay.
I, we don't want nothing, we just want them to be able to walk on water.
That's right.
Mrs. Walker, would you like to share?
So, thankfully, my counterpart nailed almost everything that we've talked about and we want to see. One of the things I would like to emphasize though, we definitely need a transformational leader for this district to really, to understand that we have been in a season of turmoil here for many different factors and reasons. But we're ready to heal and we're ready to move on. And they have to really have that vision of being able to take this district from where we are now to the excellence that we envision not only for ourselves as leaders of our board, but also for our students in our district and for our staff in our district as well. Because we want this to be the best place to work, to learn, and to live. And that means this leader as well has to be able to be a partner in the city, in our surrounding community as well. So, I am very much looking for all the attributes that Ms. O'Kelly reiterated, but also to say that they need to be able to partner and to reach out to our business community, to our city leaders as well, because this job does not get done by one entity. And that we know that partnerships are needed to make sure that our students are excelling at the level that we expect and far beyond. And that we're competing on a national and even international level with other students. So, that is the leader that I'm looking for.
Mr. Martinez?
Thank you, President Montez. This leader, 70% of our community is Spanish-speaking. So, they would have to be a Spanish speaker. They covered a couple of points for me, the ladies did. They have to have a history of student achievement. And I define positive change defined as student achievement. They have to be able to give me a history of turning a district around academically. Having to read what got checked off here, so excuse me. They have to demonstrate knowledge of technology and have a vision for STEM, have a vision for the district's future. And many times, the decision comes down to academics or cost. They're going to have to tell me how they make that decision. Because for me, when it comes down to students, that's the bottom line at all costs. And really, that's it. I do have one particular question for you, if you'd be willing to answer it, or should I hold on?
No, we'll answer that, but could I also clarify one of your comments? Your comment, frequently, we will put on the profile that, you know, bilingual skills are highly desirable. They're desirable. But you said absolutely, it seems like you were saying absolutely necessary.
If it came down to two individuals, one was desirable and one just flat knew how to speak Spanish, that would be a game changer for the community, not necessarily the board. But the community has an expectation of having a Spanish speaker.
Okay, okay.
I don't believe it's mandatory that it be bilingual.
Desirable.
Yeah, highly desirable, yes.
And you had a question?
The question would be, you kind of answered it. We will have information on the website.
Correct.
But not all parents have access to a computer or transportation to get to the district or to the library to use a computer. So, how do parents vent their concerns or their priorities? How do they add them to the list of boards?
We've had districts where there were issues similar to that. And most of the time, people were able to get to schools to have access through their computer labs. That has traditionally been the way that we've done that.
Okay, so we need to make sure that we have computers available to students.
Yeah.
And to parents, I'm sorry.
We'll also work with the principals to, for those that may be missed or may not be as comfortable talking with us, but may be more comfortable talking with principals. We'll work with them on a kind of a template as well.
Thank you.
We're very comfortable with taking input any way that it comes. I mean, and there are times that we will provide phone numbers if that's necessary, whatever it is. If a principal gave me a handful of phone numbers and said, could you speak to these parents? I would speak to those parents.
Thank you.
Mr. Rialla?
Thank you, President Montez. I'd like to start by first saying what family means to me. It's very, very important. It's one of the areas in my life that I cherish the most. And it pains me when I find out that even when our kids graduate and they do well and have great grades, that they look around in our community and they can't really apply those grades anywhere because the opportunities aren't here. So, that gives them, you know, options like, well, if I can't find work here, then I have to leave my family and go somewhere else. And that's painstaking when I hear that. I know there's superstars out there. If Bill Gates came through the door right now, how much would he be worth? What would we be willing to pay him for his services? He's definitely got a proven record, richest man in the world. Now, is it money that we're looking for, is it opportunities? You know, we're a diverse community here, culturally diverse community with special needs. It is a great place to live. You know, I'm happy I chose this area. Whoever we select, I hope he, he doesn't have to be the straight A student, okay? I mean, it'd be nice to have Bill Gates. But when you think of the Army model, the straight A students up at Cal State University, that's not who they're looking for. They need somebody with emotional intelligence, who's well-rounded, who knows how to deal with all the stakeholders, because everybody counts. You know, look at our mission statement here and we want to provide opportunities to inspire all our kids. Programs like Link Learning is one of those programs. It may not give us the high API scores, but it's going to keep Johnny engaged. So, that individual who is well-rounded and has a heart and is connected, knows how to treat people, knows how to talk to people, knows how to put up fires, and return a phone call means a lot. So, I hope we can find that individual. And yes, we may decide that it might be expensive. But, you know, if he does the right thing for this community, then we have to evaluate whether or not we made the right decision. Thank you.
Do you guys have any questions for Mr. Rialla? No? All right. Well, I guess last but not least, I just would like to share a few things. And I agree with Mrs. O'Kelly. I think it'd be nice if the new superintendent could, can walk on water. But if they can't, we don't want to hold it against them. But I do want to say that I do believe that being multilingual, whether it's bilingual, trilingual, or, you know, more than that, I think it's always a plus and a benefit. But I wouldn't say that it would have to be a deal-breaker. It would have to be an absolutely mandatory thing, at least from my perspective. I think there's many people out there that are monolingual in and out of our district that do an awesome job at what they do. And I believe that if our next superintendent, permanent superintendent, is monolingual only, as long as they have a good heart, as long as they have a desire to really do what's in the best interest of this community, of these kids, of the RUSD family, I'll be okay with it, you know, even if they only speak one language. But I do believe they should at least have bilingual business cards. If they, if they, if they can't, you know. If they can't.
That's an inside joke.
You know, and, and, and I think it's important to get not just the feedback from the board. And I appreciate you guys giving us a presentation. I'm very impressed with your level of expertise. You know, 300-plus searches over the last 30 years. You know, it comes out to about, what, 10 searches a year? You know, so 50% of all the searches in the state is very, very commendable amount of searches that you guys do. So, we do, I think that's one of the main factors you were chosen is the level of expertise and experience that you guys are able to provide. The fact that all of your staff members are all partners. You don't have one particular owner, you know, it's, you guys are all owners. You're all experienced, proven superintendents. So, you guys, better than us, have, you know, after you get done hearing from us and from the community, will have a better understanding of what this district needs. Doesn't mean we want you guys to apply, you know, because we know you guys are retired and whatnot. But, but being superintendents all yourselves, you know, we really, really will be counting tremendously on your recommendations, on your expertise, and, and combined with the consideration of this community's wants and needs and the board's wants and needs. One of the biggest thing I think that the permanent superintendent, he or she, should be able to do is not just lead this district, but also be able to follow. There's different types of leadership. There's hard-nosed leadership, there's, you know, stubborn leadership, there's good-hearted leadership, and, you know, and there's weak leadership. But I think humble leadership is important, you know, and being able to know when not just to lead, but to follow. And we don't want someone that's just going to be a follower. You know, we do want a leader, but we do want someone that'll be able to listen to the recommendations of the cabinet, of the staff, the administration, the teachers, certified, certificated and certified employees, someone that will listen to the parents, the students, everyone in general. I think it would be unfair for us to get someone that's going to be only pro, you know, pro one group. We need someone that's going to be pro everybody. We want someone that's going to be inclusive and try to bring everyone together, not exclusive. And, you know, thumb their nose at, you know, the city leadership or anybody else. We've got a lot of work to do. Obviously, you're aware of many of the challenges that we've faced in the past and we're healing from and continuing to face. But in the end, I just want to make sure we get a person with a really big heart, you know. And it doesn't hurt, you know, to have a really big brain too, so. With, with that, um, I think it'd be good to hear from our student board member, um, you know, about a few things.
Absolutely.
She thinks would be good in the next permanent superintendent.
Personally, I believe that the sup- um, our next superintendent should honestly just mainly have the best interest in the students overall.
I know you presented the eight points that you were going to cover, but, uh, I'm sure the public would love to hear about the timeline and, uh, in particular, you know, the starting date and so forth. It's on page five of what you gave to the board.
We, we've already begun the process of looking at calendars and trying to find availability and so forth. And we wanted to provide enough time to get advertisement notification out for the very first, that community meeting day. So, uh, looking at our calendars, we had selected February tenth. Now, that doesn't necessarily involve you, 'cause you wouldn't be at those events, but I think that gives you enough time to do, to allow staff to do the planning. And we'll talk next part, we'll talk a little bit about the, the, who you want us to talk to as, as part of the process. But, uh, do you see any reason or any concern about that particular date? February tenth.
Uh, what day of the week is that?
It's a Tuesday.
On the Tuesday?
I would be more concerned with the staff. I'm sure moving ahead in a timely manner is what the board and community would want. Our staff has to be able to meet that.
Do you see any problem with that? Okay, okay.
What is, uh, what time again?
It would be all day. We would be here all day as part of that process. We'll lay that day out. We just wanna establish the day and then we'll work on the timeline.
Would, would, uh, would a minimum day be better, um, for staff? Since some schools, since some schools, uh, are out early on minimum days?
We wouldn't need that right now.
Okay.
So, we're, 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 we'll work through that day. We just wanna hollow out that one day so that we could start putting things in it.
Okay.
Okay? And then we, we're looking at, the next date that we're looking at is how much time we need to do recruitment and basically advertise and go through the process. So, right now, we tentatively had selected March sixteenth as a date.
That's the date the position would close.
Okay.
Okay, so the position closes March sixteenth.
That's a Monday. We always try to do it after a Monday so that people need, and it's usually five o'clock in the afternoon. So it would be five o'clock in the afternoon on, on, on that March sixteenth, the Monday, so they have the weekend, get done whatever they need to get done. It's all done online, by the way. We, we, the application process and all the documents are created as a group and put together and then they send it to our office. All the, all the paperwork as part of the process won't necessi- will not go through your, your HR office. It will go through our office as part of the process. Okay? Now, the next two dates are re- really important to you because those are dates that you need to make sure you are available. So, those dates are, the first one is a date for us to actually present the candidates. They're, all their paperwork. So, it's a day that we'll probably need about three hours of time. And we said, right now, we're looking at April eighth.
But that date is predicated on your schedules and so, um, do you have calendars, uh, available to check? Or do you need to get back to us on that?
What day of the week is it?
April eighth is a Wednesday.
And it's not a board meeting day, right?
It is.
Oh, that might not be good.
So, if that, so if we can work around that?
Sixth or seventh is open.
Six and seventh is open. Is that okay to you? I think that is.
Monday's good. Sixth is good.
Mondays, Mondays.
Six is, six is fine?
Mondays.
Okay, so it'd be April the sixth?
That'd be April sixth. So that would be the day that we would go over all the applications and you would make the final decision. This is your process. We're just facilitating it. You'll make the selection of who you will be interviewing. So then we need a little bit of time to notify the candidates and make sure that everything is put in place for the final interview process. So, right now, we had selected, uh, was it thirteen?
Fourteen, fourteen.
Thirteen, fourteen, fif-
So, uh, taking a look at your calendars again, and this is subject to your availability, um, what do, uh, A- April fourteen and fifteen look like as potential interview dates?
What day of the week is fourteen?
Those are Tuesday, Wednesday.
Wednesday is all right.
Wednesday's good.
So, wh- it most likely, it's a one-day process. But we ask that you reserve the second day in case we need the second day. So it'd be Tuesday, Tuesday and Wednesday.
Yeah.
The fourteenth and fifteenth?
Fourteenth and fifteenth.
I typically babysit my grandson two days a week, but that mu- that her- his mother's having another baby and will be on maternity leave then, so I'm free.
Tuesday's not a good day, uh, but Wednesday's all right.
Okay.
I've, I've got the fourteenth and the fifteenth. Is that Tuesday, Wednesday, or Wednesday, Thursday?
Tuesday and Wednesday.
That's okay with me.
About sixteen or seventeen?
Sixteen's all right. It'll be, uh, Wednesday, Thursday. That's all right.
I, I can't do Thursday then.
Okay.
Friday?
Friday's not a good day.
So...
Monday and, uh...
Most likely then, we can get it done on Wednesday, the fifteenth.
Okay, okay.
And should we need, should we need to go over, usually it's just the morning.
Okay.
Okay.
That's needed.
So does that date work for everyone?
Wednesday, the fifteenth.
April the fifteenth.
As far as I know, I don't have my calendar, so.
Your tax was done early.
I'm winging it. Oh, I don't wait to...
I mean, I, I would suggest we just schedule it and then if, if, if any, if anything else.
Yeah.
We'll have a chance to modify.
Yeah, yeah, we'll modify it. Otherwise, everyone's gonna know what we, all the things we have to do those days.
Okay, so we're good on dates. So the next part of the process we'd really like to do, and I'll spend a couple of minutes, is talk about those organizations that you wanna make sure we contact as part of the process to gather input from.
Yeah, well, we definitely want you to, uh, speak with, uh, our union reps, union representatives, our union membership, uh, the district's unions, uh, both, uh, REA and, uh, CSEA.
Okay. D-LAC, your D-LAC?
D-LAC.
Yeah. Uh, parents.
Do you have any other unique committees like your D-LAC that, do you have a bond committee?
Yes, Measure Y.
There's also another, uh, union, uh, and that would be the Substitute Teachers Union.
CWA.
Communication Workers of America?
CWA.
Substitute Teachers Union.
Yes.
Okay.
Do you have the parent university? If, uh, maybe you can combine them and buy them to D-LAC.
And that's what we do sometimes.
Yeah, they're universal.
Uh, we have a Measure Y Bond Committee. We also have a Measure Y Steering Committee.
Okay.
So...
The, uh...
Superintendent Advisory Council?
We... Maybe, uh, one with all the principals?
Yeah, yeah, you definitely need to.
We will definitely meet with the principals.
And our admins have a group as well. It's not an association as, as a union, but it is RSMA, yes, yes.
Our Safety and Security Department.
Okay.
You still have your DSAC students, the DSAC students, maybe give them to give some input as to how the schools have been participating. And let's not forget the, uh, there's, there's a lot of groups.
Nutritional Services.
Okay.
The, uh, the Special Ed Department has been a very challenging area to take care of their needs. That, that, that's an area that, that's, I think, a, a high priority. We need to find ways to help them meet their needs.
Special Ed Task Force in place.
Do you have, do you have a, um, a student council group that's comprised of all the...
No, it's, well, DSAC.
Student Advisory Committee?
Yeah, that's all ASB.
Some of the leadership, uh...
That's a good start. That's a good start.
We usually do that early in the morning so they can get back to school.
They, we have that at the middle and high school levels. And of course, all the administrators and district administrators and site administrators and teachers and secretaries and just everybody.
It's, it's, that's, you've been down that road before. Both of you have, so you know what we're saying.
We want everybody to have input that wants input.
Absolutely.
It's not an easy process.
Totally inclusive.
How about city groups?
Oh, talk to Rialto PD, Rialto Fire.
We usually do a city meeting.
And maybe Kiwanis, yeah. Kiwanis, yeah, okay.
Church groups.
And we'll do a service club.
We're gonna have to get some feedback from our mayor and city council members.
Right.
As part of the city group that's traditionally... How, are there any community colleges that, that you have a close working relationship with?
You know, San Bernardino?
San Bernardino Valley, Valley College.
If we get some input there, we'd be very advised. Yeah, they're, they're definitely a big key player in helping us with our kids.
Okay. Community college.
And of course, the parents. I just hope we get a lot of parent participation in this, so.
You, you, you're also more than welcome to, uh, speak with the Sun Newspaper. Wouldn't be a bad idea.
He's right over there.
So, just, I, I wanna reiterate, uh, in our conversation a little earlier, for those of you who are listening or, or not a part of an organized group, um, they will be holding two meetings that'll be open forum, two community meetings that are open forum. So if you're not a part of any invited group, um, in the morning, there'll be a morning session and an evening session as well. Um, and the district will work our very darnedest, so you've gotta get the word out too, to help us in this, because anyone is welcome to give input on those meetings. And so we invite you all and we're gonna need your help to get that input so that we don't have the usual suspects in the room, but we have the people who are actually impacted the most
Right.
um, by who our new leader will be. So just wanted to reiterate that.
And we will also advertise widely the link off of your site, your district's site, that will allow them to access the survey, online survey. And many people, many people prefer doing that where they can sit at home and be thoughtful through the process. And it captures every comment. You'll, you'll get pages and pages of comments.
That's good, very good.
We're used to pages and pages of comments.
Okay, so we have the, the community groups, which will work with, um, Rosie and the staff on, um, setting up a schedule. We have a tentative timeline. Uh, we have, uh, the beginning stages of the characteristics. And so I think we're off to a very, very good start. Uh, we'll be in contact with you. Uh, we'll, um, get your emails from, uh, your interim superintendent and, uh, we'll email you periodically, uh, updates. Uh, if you have questions, we'll leave our cards with you and feel free to email us and contact us as well. This is your search. We wanna emphasize that. It's your search. We're gonna help you facilitate it. And, uh, we look forward to bringing some outstanding candidates, uh, for you to consider.
And one more thing the community is going to want to know, it's, it's down here. On July first, on page five, it says, "New Superintendent Begins July first, twenty fifteen."
Yep.
That's a tentative date. For the quiet newspaper man.
I'm gonna wake him up, Kay.
So for those of you who's do, uh, do have, uh, we still have, um, public comments, so if you have your I saw hand raised, just to, to make sure that you have a comment time. And, um, our representatives will still be here as well too. Thank you.
Now, um, are you guys planning on staying, uh, for public comments? Some of our, uh, people and, and some of our people in the audience, uh, community members, parents, employees, will be addressing the board at the podium. Do you guys have some time to stay and listen in case anybody would like to comment? Good, okay.
These numbers on page eight, so if we need to read you for some reason, they're current.
Current, correct.
Okay, thank you.
And you have our cards, correct?
Don't have the card.
No, we don't, we don't have the cards.
They're only in English.
Oh, that's a big problem right there.
Appreciate it.
I hope you guys brought a, a big stack of those, 'cause you might get jammed up for some of those. Any more questions or comments? Okay, then with that, we'll go ahead and move on to item C, Public Comments. Comments from the floor at this time. Any person wishing to speak on any, any item not on the agenda will be granted three minutes. And first we have Mrs. Linda Silva. Oh, okay. So we'll change it to "on the agenda." It's okay. I, I also wanted to, um, uh, let the public know that, um, we, uh, no longer will be placing a res- time restriction on when you can have your time card turned in. As long as we haven't gotten to public comment yet, just like in many other school districts and cities, you can turn it in to, uh, the Executive Secretary here for the Board, uh, Mrs. Rosie Williams, um, and I will accept it. Uh, so you will no longer have to get here really, really early and, and, uh, turn the slip card in at six forty-six and someone tell you, "Uh, you passed the six forty-five time limit." So with that, if there's no more, no one else would like to submit a card, if you'd like to submit a card, please get one, fill it out, um, and, uh, as long as we're still on this item, I'll allow it.
Um, Mr. Montez, uh, we probably need to, uh, review the board bylaws and make sure that that is updated then.
I, I don't remember that being part of the board bylaws.
I'm not sure if it is or not.
Well, we'll look into it. So first, we have Mr. Jack, Dr. Jack Poster.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am here this evening to have a summons and complaint served on Rialto Unified School District charging Rialto Unified School District with wrongful termination, fraud and wrongful termination, defamation of character, slander, intentional interference with prospective economic advantage, intentional infliction of severe emotional distress, punitive damages and unlimited damages exceeding one million dollars and punitive damages at some point in trial unspecified amount. Rialto Unified School District systematically ruined my reputation, knowingly committed fraud and destroyed my band program at Rialto High School. At one point, I begged this board to investigate further the charges against me. But this request went to deaf ears, even though sixteen hundred students, parents, staff and administrators from Rialto High School also begged them not to dismiss me. Have a nice day.
Thank you, Dr. Poster. Next up, we have Yolanda Jackson.
Good evening. Uh, tonight I'm here to let the board and cabinet members know about our annual Z-Ray luncheon, which stands for Zetas Recognizing All Youth. This is our fifth year of hosting this event and we started the event with students here in Rialto. Just to give you a little bit of information about it, we know that our high achieving students will always get recognized. Our event seeks to recognize those quiet heroes that do com- Our event seeks to recognize those quiet heroes that do community service in their community or at their school, um, to recognize students who have, um, turned it around, who have previously been not, either not well in behavior, attendance, or grades, and they have turned it around and they have at least a two-point-oh now. And then our third category, category is also students who are high achievers, but that also do community service. Um, in the past, we've had, um, some board members, our, uh, interim superintendent to come to our luncheon, and I'm here tonight because I want to extend a personal invitation. Last year, I told you guys to save the date, it's Saturday, April eleventh, and it will be at Central Park in Rancho Cucamonga. Um, since we started this event five years ago, um, in just Rialto, we have now added Fontana Unified, Etawanda Unified, and Central School District. Last year, we had two hundred and fifty guests, and Rialto's near and dear to my heart. And so, I am appealing to our secondary, eh, um, administrators and cabinet members to please encourage your, um, administrators and counselors to get the applications, um, back to our organization, which is Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated. Um, I sent them out to the schools last week, so I'll be, um, hounding them and asking them for those nominations. Um, because I am from Rialto, I want to make sure that we have more Rialto students at our event than any of the other students. Um, we also are looking for, if you can attend, we need sponsors to, um, sponsor students. We don't charge students and one adult to come to the event, because we want them to come get the recognition, and so, we cover that cost. So, um, if you have an organization that would like to sponsor kids, we also make sure that each child that's recognized gets a gift card from somewhere, whether it's movie tickets, Subway, Starbucks, something, so in addition to the medals and trophies that we give them, we give them, uh, some type of a gift certificate, so we are also looking for nominations. I did send out a save the date and a letter, and I will, uh, make sure that you guys get the information and the invitation. So, if you're going to attend this year, please RSVP, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Now, for items on agenda, on the agenda. Miss, Mr. George Rivera.
Good evening, good evening, board members, interim superintendent, uh, viewing audience. I am really, really, really happy to, to talk today, because I'm very, very optimistic. I'm very, very happy to see where the district is, uh, versus where it was. Uh, I'm very happy to see that, uh, parents are being listened to now. Way, i- in contrast with, with, uh, previous administrations, so I am very, very happy for that. I am, um, um, I want to say that I am very proud of this community. Uh, a lot of the parents that have come up and, and talked to, to the interim superintendent, to the board members, and that they've been listened to. That, that is big. Everyone needs to understand that it is the parents and the students, and they need to be listened to, and they need to be taken into consideration for every decision that's made on their behalf. So, um, um, want to, I guess, if anyone could answer the question, uh, I, I think we're in a better place now. There's been leadership, uh, you know, moving this, uh, this process along, 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 and I know there's not just one person, but, um, would like to get an answer for the, for the next question. Why is it that a contract has not been extended to the interim superintendent, as a superintendent? If anyone could answer it, appreciate it. Uh, the reason why I raised my hands, and thank you very much, because you read my mind. You read my mind, I was going to ask, uh, for, I guess, a company leadership associates. Um, there's two very important questions for me and for, I guess, a lot of the community members here. Uh, do you guys have any interest after your, your fees that you guys charge, uh, to the district? Do you guys have any interest in, do you guys get any, any percentages of the wages of the superintendents that you guys place? Second, second question would be, um, has any of the, of the superintendents you guys have, uh, have placed while you guys have been, uh, hired, uh, for, for the search, for superintendent, for any, any, uh, any district? Has anyone been questionable? Has anyone been, I mean, based on your, on the services that you guys provided to certain districts? Has anyone been, uh, uh, of those candidates that you guys have placed in, you know, in those districts? Have they been accused of anything? Have they been, uh, done any questionable actions? I know that it is not in, in your control, I know that, uh, but has any of that happened in the past? And with that, I, um, reserve my time. I mean, I'm sorry, I, I'm done.
Thank you, thank, thank you, uh, Mr. Rivera, we appreciate it, um, uh, those questions, um, uh, leadership associates is welcome to give you a business card, um, and if you'd like, uh, to have discussion with them, uh, or answer your questions, um, but we wouldn't want them to, you know, have to respond to those questions here in public. Um, the other thing is, uh, we normally don't, um, answer questions, uh, but I do want to answer one of your questions, um, and I think it's rightfully so, that the community and the people of this district know, uh, Mr. Islam, our interim superintendent, will be a candidate for this superintendent's search, um, and he has been encouraged, uh, by, uh, this board to apply and go through the process, uh, just like everyone else that will be applying, um, to be as fair as possible to the process in general, um, for the new superintendent, for the permanent superintendent. So, with that, um, and I do want to add that, you, you're correct, many people do believe, uh, he's doing a good job. So, thank you for that, and, um, it must be a little awkward for Mr. Islam to, uh, uh, you know, to sit here while we're all discussing this and we're going through this process, but, you know, what doesn't kill you makes you stronger, and we know that Mr. Islam has gotten us through some very tough times, through very challenging times, and all that will be in consideration, uh, throughout this process, but the process has to be fair, uh, and it has to be free of any appearances of impropriety, and for that purpose, Mr. Islam will not have any involvement. Let's make it clear, Mr. Islam, Islam will not have any involvement in the search process itself. He will be a candidate going through the process as a candidate. So, uh, with that, let's go on to our next item, and we want to thank leadership associates. Uh, you're welcome to stay and join us, um, for the rest of the meeting, but we probably have other, other things to do and other districts to help, so thank you very much for your presentation. Let's give them a round of applause. Next up, we have comments from association, uh, executive board members, and first, we'd like to call Rialto Education Association, if they have any members that would like to, uh, speak, um, or not. Do, do we have anyone from REA that would like to speak? Okay, so, i- in case they do, I will let them, uh, come back. Um, next, we'll go to California School Employees Association, and we do have, uh, Mrs. Linda Silva that would like to speak.
Good evening, board members, Mr. Islam, and other administrators and community. Um, this evening, um, oh, I'm Linda Silva, president of CSEA, but this evening, I'm coming to praise the work of, um, our classified electricians. Um, back in January on, uh, this month, on the Sunday, the eleventh, we had an elementary school that was hit very hard with some severe vandalism, which I'm sure you're aware of. But I wanted to point out that it was our outstanding classified electricians that came to the rescue and had that school up and running for Monday morning, when the kids came to school. Those, um, three electricians, which I didn't get permission to use their full names, so I'm only going to refer to them as Dave, Marcos, and Ed. Um, and they, um, worked all night long, from Sunday afternoon until six-thirty, seven o'clock the next day, to get that school up and running. And I also want to give kudos to their supervisors, um, Sean and Gary. So, the reason I guess I'm here tonight is that, when I hear that we have classified staff doing this kind of work, um, I would really like to ask this board that you start recognizing the efforts and outstanding performances of our classified employees, the way that administrators and teachers get recognized by you at meetings. It would be nice for the classified staff to be getting some sort of kudos for jobs like this that they have done, and things that we do on a daily basis for the students and the teachers and the staff of this district. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Silva. Next up, uh, do we have anyone from Communication Workers of America?
Good evening, Mr. Montez, president and the board, and Mr. Islam. My name is Ron Fletcher, I'm the area vice president for substitute teachers. Uh, I really appreciate you listening and putting in these comments for the association, but you missed one association, and that's your management association. I do feel that they should have a right to get up and say something to you also. Got a couple of questions. One, I was kind of disappointed in a young lady from Eisenhower. I couldn't believe the huge article we had in the Sun paper showing Eisenhower beating Cahone. Now, Cahone's been a powerhouse for girls' basketball for years, and to have your team come out and beat him by one little lousy point, which is pretty big. I was kind of sad that she didn't put more into it for that. And when I knew that Ms. O'Kelly used to be there, I've, you, were you at the game?
No, I wasn't, but I'm very proud of them.
You should be, that was a great game. But I did not go either, even though all of my children graduated from Cahone. They were into water sports, not that. I have a couple of other things I wanted to ask you about. Uh, number two, you had your presentation on the audit, is there some way that we can get a copy of that audit?
The, the audit will be available district website.
District website, okay, thank you.
And if you could not reach it to the, uh, website, you'd like to have a, a hard copy, we'll, we'll, we'll be glad to give you a copy.
I prefer that, because I have a computer that's two thousand and three, and you get these big things, it doesn't work too well.
We'll, we'll be glad to give you, give you a, a copy.
All right, I'll pick one up later, thank you, sir. Okay, the other thing, okay, I'll get it in just a second. The other thing is, I was talking to Dr. Sousa about an item in your agenda that really kind of bothered me, and that item is G eleven, and I would like to ask him at this time if he would explain it to you, because if you read it, you're paying somebody seventy dollars an hour for teaching. So, I think you should ask him what it, because when he explained it to me, I understood a little bit more about it, but I still think it's kind of high. So, that's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fletcher. Um, do we have someone from REA?
Good evening, President Montez, members of the board, interim superintendent, Mr. Islam. Um, I have our demand to bargain that I would like to present to the board president and to Mr. Islam, so may I bring it up?
Yes, please. And we will make sure to put our management association on the next agenda. Uh, does anyone mind if we, uh, invite the management association to speak for that? I, I think we should be okay, uh, do, do we have anyone that would like to comment on anything tonight or speak for the management association? Alrighty.
Good evening, um, board president Montez, and vice president O'Kelly, I think it's the first time I got to say that this time. Board members Martinez, uh, clerk, Walker, and, uh, Mr. Ayella, and our student board, uh, member. Um, I am here on behalf of RSMA, and I actually was just going to get up and say, we wanted to make sure that we were included in one of those groups that you talk with, with the superintendent's search, the district management team, and then we also wanted to make sure that we were added back to the agenda. So, as usual, this new board is ahead of us, so thank you very much, and thank you, CWA, for pointing that out. Appreciate it, night.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Harris. Next on the agenda is public hearing, item D, and there is none, so that'll take us to consent calendar items. All items on the consent calendar will be enacted upon in one motion unless pulled by the board of education members or interim superintendent for individual action. Uh, so with that, could I get a motion to approve consent calendar items, reference E through J?
I'll make that motion with a question.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, board clerk, Ms. Walker.
I have discussion on G ten.
Okay, so, would we like to pull, uh, these items for, uh, discussion, separate discussion and, and and approval or denial, and approve the remaining items that are not being questioned? So, we'll go ahead and pull item, did you say G ten?
Mm-hmm.
G ten. Do we have any other pulls?
G eleven.
G eleven. Do we have any more?
I have G eleven too. So, two of us.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, I also had H six, I'm sorry. H six.
And I would like to discuss F three. Okay, with that, uh, can I get a motion to approve all remaining items?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so first, we'll go to item G ten. And, uh, I believe, uh, Ms. O'Kelly?
Yeah.
You have a concern, okay.
Um, first of all, uh, this item is dated January fourteenth, which is in the past, so am I to assume we've already approved this item?
G ten. Already approved for speech therapists from different companies, and remember in the past, and so, we've actually, actually had, and I let Erica go to the podium on this, but as she goes up, we had about five vacancies in the speech, either for maternity leave or for growth capacity, if you can approach the podium, and then we had to fill it, because then the students are without a speech teacher. And so, we had to, that's why we had to immediately fill it, because the company would not hold the person, we, and we had to give, uh, an agreement right away to the company, because they were holding the person for us.
Okay, well, first of all, we had to ratify an agreement, so how are we ratifying the agreement?
Ma- Ms.
Yes.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello, Mr. Montez, and vice president, board members, um, Mr. Islam, and everyone. Um, okay, so, the reason why we're ratifying is that there are services right now at one of our, actually, two of our sites, where the services have not been provided, because the SLP is on maternity leave. So, that's why we had to ask for the ratification, because these services are already mandated by the IAP. And so, when I came in the last time and I spoke on your, on behalf of what, something else that we pulled, we were adding another vendor, but this vendor has what's called an SLP assistant, which is the person who's covering the actual therapy services for our, um, SLP, who right now is which is the person who's covering the actual therapy services for our SLP, who right now is currently on maternity leave. I don't know if I answered your question.
Okay. So, we have not approved this person before. This is...
Correct, this is another vendor who had, who had an SLP Assistant.
Okay.
Not an SLP.
Well, one of the things that I'm big on is getting these items on time. I do understand emergencies, but if the kids have been going without services for two weeks, then that means two weeks ago, that item could have been in where we would have been able to approve it, you know, hopefully on time. The other thing I had is...
Can I, can I add a little bit to that?
Sure, sure.
Speech therapists, as you know, are very hard to find.
Right.
And the companies compete against each other for even the same therapist. So when they say they have someone, you have another company who's ready to pick up that same person. And we have, we have been searching for speech therapists and have had vacancies all year in competing with these companies. And so what happens is, the children go without services, and then we all compensatory, which means make up sessions. Parents don't like that, and it's not to the best benefit of the children either, because, you know, you can't give them all the service in one week or in three weeks, when they really should be getting it throughout the year. So, with special education, it's very common to ratify services so that you don't have a disruption of services. We try our best to get the people in on time, but if we can't find them, we can't find them. We have had with Personnel and Advertisement for Speech Therapists since last year. And we've had contracted services, I believe, for the last five years with Envo. And so, at this time, you're seeing a speech pathologist assistant, which we have never used and had to resort to, because they couldn't find us a credentialed special ed speech therapist.
And I understand that, but you have, from our point of view, if for some reason, whatever the reason might have been, we didn't want to approve this item, the person's already been working without approval. So that puts us in a hard spot.
Right.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to ask is, this is for eleven thousand, eleven thousand five hundred fifty dollars for six weeks of work. Is that typically what these people make?
Well, if we have an actual speech therapist, it will be eighty-five to ninety-five dollars an hour. If they, and that's typically what they make, depending if they're bilingual or not bilingual, depending on their experience. This is an assistant, so we went with the assistant, because it was on a temporary basis and we couldn't find an actual therapist. So what we're doing is, we're very fortunate that, that our coordinator is actually a speech therapist too. So if we have an assessment to do, she'll pick that up, so this person can actually only provide service. This person is not credentialed to be able or authorized to do any assessment, but only services.
I see.
So this price is only for an assistant. If it was an actual therapist, it would be between eighty-five and ninety dollars an hour.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else on G-10? Okay. So, with that, do we have a motion to approve item G-10?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next we have G-11. And that is to ratify the agreement between Rialto Unified School District and Professional Tutors of America to provide a hundred and forty hours of one-to-one instructional sessions for student number five-two-one-three-nine per the Individual Education Plan. Now, let me just get this straight. Per the IEP, it was determined that this student... This student deserves to, or needs to, be provided these, this amount of hours of one-on-one instruction?
Right, and I'll let Ms. Del Rio go to the microphone, but I'll give you some background knowledge. Most districts have a blanket amount, which I had brought at one time, but I wanted the Board to know of every expense we do, so that you know the amount, so it's not hidden behind a blanket amount. And that's why this is on the agenda, and that's why it's late in a way. The other thing is to remember that when the kids don't get their services, we owe those hours, even if it was from behind, you know, time, it's compensatory education, then Ms. Del Rio said. And so we owe these hours, and then we owe additional hours, so I'll let her go in detail on it.
Right, and an example was the speech ther... Good evening, by the way, I didn't even say good evening to...
Sorry.
To all of you, important members and audience. But I wanted to tell you, this is a prime example of, like the speech therapist. If we don't give those services, then we have to provide those services at a later time. And if we don't find people to do them, then you have to end up picking up people who are expensive. And those are your agencies, the agencies make their money that way. And so sometimes we have to resort to, to that. And so, just to let you know a little bit of, of background is that parents can go back and claim compensatory for back as far as two years. Unless you gave a settlement agreement.
If it's in the IEP?
Right, if it's in, if it's in anything. They can go back and say, "You didn't provide something." Or if it was an agreement, or if it was in the IEP, they can go back and say, "You know what? Two years ago, I asked for this, I didn't get a response," or "It wasn't provided." And so, those things are called compensatory, or settlement agreements, okay? And the settlement agreements, and some of these districts have come to the Board, and others they don't, and so on. So, with this, I can't, I can't disclose this case to you and tell you the information. But I can tell you that, in this case and in this district, when this situation came up, and it came up a couple of times, I asked if we had a home teacher that could provide the service after school, because these kids cannot be tutored by a, an aide, for example, because they're not credentialed. So, you say, "Okay, I have an option to go back and use home teachers." When I went back to Student Services back then and asked for home teachers, I was told, "We don't have home teachers here, we only have what's called home hospital teachers." And home hospital teachers require a doctor prescription. Well, because this is not a medical reason, you can't use the home teacher, and that's what our policy says. So, since then, Angela and I have been working with how to put that in place. We're looking at some procedures, and to start using home teachers. And home teachers are used for various reasons. For example, if you have a student who hasn't been enrolled for a week, for, because they're getting assessments, or we're finding a non-public school placement, or we can't, you know, there's not a program for them at this time, you can provide them home instruction in the meantime, if the parents are in agreement. If we weren't to find that, we would have to use something like Professional Tutors of America, which is used throughout Los Angeles and Orange County and San Bernardino County. And so, at this, in this particular time, that's what we had to resort to, to replace a hundred and forty hours of, of lessons that we felt the student needed. We have another situation coming up, and we are going to be using a teacher. So it will be at a lower cost. But it's something we didn't have in place.
So, for this particular instance, this cost is for one tutor?
It's for one, it's a hundred and forty hours, it's seventy dollars an hour.
For one student?
For one student, but remember, it's a hundred and forty days. Yeah, and in this, I have to tell you, in identifying, we don't have a home teacher, and you couldn't put it right there and then, in place. But we now are working on creating a pool of teachers, and putting that procedure in place. I did bring some procedures with me that I have shared with Angela, that we are looking at to finalize.
Yeah, I'm sure we have some teachers who would like to earn some extra money.
Oh, I'm sure we do, yeah.
And it would be a more reasonable amount.
Right, so we want to create that pool, because teachers will do it, except it's always been authorized to only have home teachers. It's not a process for referring or requesting a home teacher, only home hospital teachers.
Okay, thank you.
Stay there.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, President Montez, Ms. Del Rio. It was asked about the cost, thank you for covering that. I just want the public to hear from you, that through the Special Ed Task Force and even before that, have we been trying to cover these items in-house? And because of not having them in-house, we've had to go out? I just want the public to hear that.
This is an example of some of the programs that are not in-house right now. You have kids going to non-public schools, because there weren't, we don't have programs that are as, that can be comparable to the services that are being provided at some of the non-public schools. But certainly, those are things that we can bring in. Certainly, you know, I've been here since July, and so it's not going to happen overnight. But we are identifying that, and then there's other programs, like the autism programs, where we provide ABA for our students. The county programs, which are the severe programs, the medically fragile students. Well, it's going to take time to bring them back, and it's going to cost money to bring them back. So when, when you see a cost at the beginning of the year with programs that we are identifying, such as Adult Transition and Preschool Programs, that we are now putting into place the way they should be, it's going to cost money to do that. But you know, the students come first, and you want to provide them with the education that they need to have. And that's going to cost money, because it hasn't been there for a while. And so, it's hard for me to not do anything about it, and to just turn my face the other, my cheek the other way, and say, "Well, we're not going to continue to spend the money," when I'm seeing the children are progressing. And I think the biggest need, if I can say, is that we need intervention programs. Right now, you know, we have intervention programs we want to put in place, but we need more. We have an excessive amount of referrals being sent to, for special education, because right now, it's the fix-all. And so, I'm grateful that we have very strong curriculum, people who are looking at that to bring in, and we have RTI programs that are being put in, and you know, you know, Mrs. Valenswell has been very helpful in that. And I stayed for the principal's meeting for elementary, and I was so happy to see all the things that are being put in place. And so those are the things that we're taking back to the teams and saying, "We've got to support this." And so, we have just recently put an RTI program, which, for our preschool program, which didn't exist either, and we just opened up, we're opening up a TK, and we opened up an autism program, which will allow kids that have been sitting at home to come into the programs. So, it's expanding their programs, and we are going to be adding more instructional time, instead of having a four-day program, looking at a five-day program the way it should be. But those things are going to cost money, because you're going to have to hire more teachers. So you might see an increase, but that's where it is, it's going all to the children.
There's nothing wrong with hiring more teachers. Thank you, Mrs. Del Rio. Do you guys have anything else?
Thank you, just one final comment, thank you for working here.
Thank you, and I appreciate being here.
And for those of you who don't know, Ms. Del Rio, she is Director of Special Education, Mrs. Monica Del Rio, thank you.
Norma Del Rio.
Norma, sorry, sorry.
That's okay. Ed calls me Monica, too, Monica's over there.
Monica, Norma.
She does the harder work. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, do we have a motion to approve item G-11?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now on to H-6. And that is, this is a financial consent item. H-6, to approve an agreement with the Delanca Group LLC effective January twenty-second, two thousand fifteen, to assist in complying with continuing disclosure undertakings related to outstanding general obligation bonds and certificates of participation for the fiscal year two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen.
The concern I had on this one, the agreement's for seventy-five hundred dollars, and it says plus reimbursable expenses. But there's no, like, not-to-exceed amount on reimbursable expenses, and I feel there should be, or, you know, they could reimburse a whole lot of stuff.
The, the amount, again, this is just, they don't believe there would be any reimbursable, but they just like a catch in case they have to... This is kind of a pretty standard, and we could not quantify any amount. I believe with the seventy-five hundred is not to exceed, does cover the reimbursable, but the...
I think it has to be worded.
Well, it says plus reimbursable expenses.
Right, but what I'm trying to clarify this, at this time, they could not give us any number. If we, if I put any number, that's misleading. So, the number reimbursable will be based on, if they made a... They have to produce a document how much they spent to, you know, to reimburse.
Right, but we should have a not-to-exceed amount.
But if I give you any amount, I would call this incorrect.
No, it's not incorrect, it's not to exceed. We're saying, you know, we're not going to reimburse more than this amount of money.
And this is the first year they're going to do this, this for us. Perhaps we'll know next year. They have no track record of what else they have to do, and that's why it's a challenge. I did have the same concern that you expressed, Mrs. O'Kelly.
Well, that's, can't we amend this and put a not-to-exceed amount on it?
Or perhaps, Mr. Islam, what we could do is pull the item and get a ballpark figure for them, what, what they, they, what's normally expected to be reimbursable amount, and then we can bring that back to the Board for approval. It's, I have seen not-to-exceed amounts on reimbursable expenditures in the past. I think Mrs. O'Kelly's concern is, we don't want it to be...
The blank check, you know.
Right, right.
Yeah, we can do that, you know, but again...
Or for it to be the reimbursable amount, exceed what the, what the original amount is for.
The, the challenge is, let's say I put...
In other words, hidden costs.
You're correct, and I had the same difficulty. The challenge, let's say I put a thousand dollar not-reimbursable. Then later on, if you exceed, and I have to bring this back to you, then here's a real cost. So, we're going to monitor this, you know, I, I don't believe there'll be any, but at this time, I don't know.
Well, we can either amend it tonight, or we can pull the item and get a number from them of what they think might be reasonable.
Bring it back on the...
But I don't want to vote on this the way it's worded.
Sure, I can, I can bring it back. If the Board is comfortable pulling it, I will engage and I'll find out a reasonable amount.
As long as there's no timeline that we've been moving...
Yeah, no, we're good, we're good.
So, okay, so then we will go ahead and pull item H-6. Pull item H-6, and bring it back for the next agenda meeting.
One thing I'd like to remind the Board, I have to bring back as a ratified. This is a really compliance issue, as you know, whether we enter a bond, the finding. So I want to be clear, if I bring it back, I recommend to pull tonight. I don't want to delay the compli... The company, they have to do the work, and then we'll be out of compliance. So, my recommendation, let's pull it, and I'll bring back to ratify effective January twenty-second.
As a reference, you might look back at our last cost from a different vendor. And see what the last bond cost us to do, and start there.
We have never done it, that's why we're out of compliance.
I, I understand, but I, I thought we had another group that was doing something for us with the last issuance of Series A and B.
Yeah.
I don't think we'd want to go by their cost.
Well, that'd give us an idea of base cost.
Sure, I will bring back to you with the...
No.
But my point is, we don't want to delay the comply. So, once they return back to you next agenda, it'll ratify. So, I hope the Board is okay.
Thank you, Mr. Islam. Next up, we have item F-3. And that's the first reading of revised Board Policy forty-three fifteen, A through E, Administrative and Supervisory Personnel Evaluation Supervision. And, and, and I'm glad that, I believe Mrs. Del Rio brought up the fact that our policy, somebody brought up the fact regarding our policies. And, and moving forward, one of the things that, that, that we want to do is really take a close look at not just the policies that we have now, that we need to change, amend, or update, but also policies that we want to enact to protect the district from questionable situations that can arise. For example, we need to have a policy, we need to develop a policy. Well, we'll leave that for, for new business, but, or I'll save that for my Board Reports. For F-3, there's some changes that are being made to the evaluation process for supervisory personnel. Would anyone like to comment on why these changes are being suggested or recommended to the Board?
Yeah, President Montez, this is just an update. We get updates from California School Boards Association. And there's really not, I would say, any substantial changes in here. But these are basically for management and, you know, principals, vice principals, myself, who are management, just documenting the procedures of evaluations for those kind of people.
Okay, so since the staff that, the staff that is also... The staff that's recommending the, the changes for the evaluations are also part of the people that are evaluated for... Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I wanted to get that cleared up. Um, what is the biggest difference? Because I, I know that you get things from CSBA, but you pick and choose what you want to include on the agenda. Um, and I don't know if it'd be, I, one of the things I'd like to suggest moving forward is, uh, board policy workshops, uh, on really, uh, studying and understanding our current board bylaws and board policies and then seeing what we can do to improve them. But, um, there's been some board bylaws and policies that staff has been recommending to update or change. And I just wanna make sure that we're doing it in the best interest of the district and the best interest, uh, of protecting, uh, our, our, our employees and not, not changing policy necessarily just to benefit, you know, any particular group of people. Um, I do find it a little awkward that, you know, that staff is making recommendations to change the evaluation process, um, when the same staff are included in the evaluation process.
There's really no substantial changes, but sometimes there are new standards that come up. For example, on, on the second page of that board policy.
Well, for example, I see crossed out here, such standards may include those of the California Professional Standards for Education Leaders, as well as other standards and criteria developed by the board and superintendent. And that whole section has been crossed out.
But it brings, but it brings it back. If you read the, you read it again in bold, it says the same thing again, but...
Well, it, it doesn't, if it said the same thing, then what's the purpose of changing it?
That's why CSB recommends it. So, you look at the changes. For example, if you look at any certificate administrator supervisor employee who is new, right, it's crossed out. Then you look at the next paragraphs, is any employee shall be about annually for the first two years of employment. Now, they're saying the same thing, but in a different language. It's just rewording, rewording what it says. So, that's why you have to look at it real carefully. The other thing...
No, I, I am, I, 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 I am, and I don't see where, where, the section I just read, I don't see it in the, in the next...
In the next one and the last sentence where it says...
It's actually on the bottom of the page on three point two. It's included there.
The employee, his or her supervisor, the superintendent or designee. And then also, Mr. Montez, the standards...
Standards on the bottom of page two.
The standards on the bottom is going to the SIPSEL nationally. That's, um, the management standards that is being used. It stands for the California Professional Standards for Educational Leaders. That, um, as far as I know, Tom, that is new. Yeah, the standards. And I think that's part of the update as well from CSBA.
Okay. And Mr. Montez, in the past, the strikeouts were not included. It was only the changes. We've included this, the strikeout, so you know what the changes have been.
You know what the old and what the new.
Well, it, it should always be that way.
Yeah, it was.
And, yeah, Mr. Montez, uh, we, as a superintendent cabinet, we review this before we put, put place on the agenda. We have sometimes find, uh, changes not, uh, right for Rialto Unified School District. As you were saying, it's not with taking everything CSBA recommend because they are, they're, they have expertise in the board policy and the governance. So, we respectfully take their recommendations. But furthermore, each of division had, they reviewed their items and we, as a superintendent cabinet, engage and review the items before we place on the agenda.
Right. So, um, like I said, um, uh, moving forward, uh, I think it'd be good to have a workshop for board policies and board bylaws for the board to study, understand and, uh, make any, you know, suggestions or goals, uh, to, uh, make sure that the board policies, um, reflect the, the goals of the district and the goals of the board. So, um...
Comment?
Yeah.
In particular, it looks like this was probably triggered from the, uh, local control and accountability.
Right.
Yes.
Right.
Says so, second paragraph where it, uh, references everything in bold there, the change. Then on F three point five, there's legal reference that, uh, that either requires change to update California codes. And that, that's where we really don't have too much choice on some of this.
Yeah, well, there's also legal references that are crossed out.
But the main thing is, as teaching and learning changes, which it is drastically, the way we evaluate our employees has to change too. It has to match with what we're doing.
And I understand, don't, don't get me wrong, um, uh, I, I just, I just wanted to get clarification on who's making the suggestions.
These are from CSBA.
I, CSBA doesn't set our agenda. Staff, staff puts these, makes these recommendations. I know they got it from CSBA, but CSBA didn't put it on.
I think Mohammed said though, that each area goes over the changes for their department.
Right.
And approves it, and that's how it gets in the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Montez, every division's had in this case, SS Superintendent, let's say, at services. Jasmine Onchido received her policies. She was going to review this. And furthermore, every policy, um, and administrative regulations, we, as a superintendent cabinet, would go through entire policy before we place an item on the agenda for you, for your first reading.
And, and I understand that and, and I, I, I appreciate it, um...
And, and if I may, uh, the ALCAP changed a lot of old regulations that no longer, um, applies to the, so that, those are the changes are coming to the process.
Right. So, with that, do we have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alrighty. That brings us up to item K. Discussion Action Items. Do we have a motion to approve?
Question. Um, we approved those items that the board had questions on, but I don't think we went through, correct me if I'm wrong, and actually approved the consent calendar items, the rest of them.
We, we did that first. Do we have a motion to approve discussion action items?
Don't we have to read each one individually?
Oh, that's right. Thank you, Ms. O'Kelly, Vice President. Uh, the first item, we do have to go through these individually. Um, we no longer are going in a consent calendar form. So, the first item is to ratify an agreement between the Rialto Unified School District and Linda Mood Bell Learning Processes to provide one-on-one instructional sessions for special education students per the individual, individual e- education plan, otherwise known as an IEP, effective November first, two thousand fourteen through June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
I have discussion. Uh, we are back in the same place here. This is from November. Now, honestly, ratifying something from November is getting really ridiculous.
Right, so let me give you a little background that Mr. Islam and I had in the past when it was, and I let Ms. Del Rio go up to the microphone too. But in the past, these items, because they were instruction for the kids, never ever came to the board. Okay, because they were part of the instruction program for the student.
Well, if we're paying them, they have to come to the board.
Right, but I wanted to make sure that everything came to the board, so you knew. And this is not for one student. This is for, as time went on, it added up to five students. But I wanted to make sure the board was informed of every expenditure and that's why we have it on the board item. Thank you.
Okay, I'm not trying to be difficult here, but this, getting these things in on time is imperative. There's the very occasional emergency, but we, this looks ridiculous to go back and ratify this far, far back.
Mrs. O'Kelly, I think what we're trying to say is that originally, this wasn't something, we did the contracts, but we were told they didn't have to come to the board for approval. So, that's why they didn't. Um, later on, we were told that, um, you know, that it's better to bring them to the board for approval and that's why they came. So, prior to that, the policy was not to bring them. But we are, we are now bringing them to be, to have a...
I don't understand. I thought all expenditures had to be approved by the board. Am I right?
That's what the board wants.
So, how could they not have been, had to come to the board?
Let me clarify. Yes, you do approve all expenditures. Some expenditures comes in the form of purchase order.
Dog, this is a certain amount of blankets.
The purchase order. So, my direction to the staff, this type of expenditure need to be in, in the contract. Um, so this is called contract versus purchase order. If you look at tonight, you have a list of all the, all the purchase order you are, you are going to approve tonight. So, board, you are absolutely correct. Nothing we can spend without your approval. Some of the process comes, purchase order, we present to you because of, after the fact. We cannot spend, give you the PO without PO being, uh, issued to the, to the vendor. That's not, that, that process doesn't work, that you need to know what's the PO before the PO is, can be, uh, produced. So, the fact of the matter, yeah, that's, that's the report I'm referring to.
So, if I understand correctly, they used to come to us this way.
Now, we're being as a contract.
Okay.
That's the only thing.
Well, if it is a contract, if the board should also have, uh, be able to review the contracts, any contracts. If, if there's a contract for the board to, to approve, we don't want just this one, two sentence on here. We should be able to at least have access to review the contract in case we have any questions.
But, uh, I, let me make sure I'm clear. So, any and all...
In the future, in the future.
So, any and all contract, board like to have a copy, uh, with your agenda? This will be a nightmare.
No, no.
Just access if we have questions.
They're available, board, so you, you've asked me a copy, we'd like to give you a copy.
Okay.
But if you want with your agenda, I can see you, I, we can do that, but I hope...
No.
Well, what's the criteria for determining what needs a contract and what just goes on the purchase order?
As you heard, Ms. Del Rio saying, in the past, it was treated as an instructional need. Like we buy supplies for the schools.
All right.
We buy textbooks. They don't come in the form of contract. I, I call this as a service.
So, it has a contract.
It has a contract.
All right.
And it protects us, you know, it protects our district.
It's better this way. That way, uh, no one can, can point out to us that we were spending unnecessary expenditures.
I think this is a better system process.
It's fine. It's fine.
It's improvement. Thank you.
It might be rough at first, but we'll get through it, you know.
And we, 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 it's not that we're catching up, you know, we're catching up things.
And the questions come from wanting to understand, so...
Okay, Norma, thank you.
So, Mrs. O'Kelly, one more thing, because this is a lot expenditure. Mrs. Del Rio and I have talked about reading, we're setting up some kind of reading program at each high school so that we can actually avoid this. We can actually have our teachers trained in this. We can't, this is a trade name. We can't call it that. But it can be a reading strategy that can be used at the high school later on. So, we've actually talked about that.
We talked about like a reading lab with different, uh, different stra- reading strategies that would be to address the needs for each individual child. And one of them would be the strategies that are used through Linda Mood Bell, the, the, uh, visualizing, verbalizing idea.
Bringing more in-house.
Yes, and again, it's the thing about bringing in-house. And I apologize, it looks like we're bringing something late, but it was just a change of process.
Okay, thank you.
But again, we wanted to let you as a board know every expense, so you were aware.
Okay.
I think it was an intent, a very good intent on behalf of the superintendent and associate superintendent to be more transparent about what we're doing with our kids.
It is an improvement.
Yes.
And we, we, we understand your concern. We don't want to bring things after the fact. That's, I don't like it. I know you don't, and that's, that we're going to, that's not the really, we want to make sure it doesn't ha- continue to happen.
And my question is, I, I'm seeing a lot of change, a lot of IEP, um, driven change. But I don't see that this says anything about transportation. Um, I probably should have checked my backup here. But on all these items, I'm assuming there is a transportation cost attached to it, since we're not doing it in-house.
There's a reimbursement to the parents for mileage and those do come to you separately.
Okay, okay.
Because these are after school and our buses are all occupied with transporting our children. So, the parents are gracious enough to say, well, we'll transport. And so, we reimburse them for their mileage.
Okay, um, that, that was one of my concerns. With the FICMAT study, it said that our transportation costs are killing us.
Mm-hmm.
And by that, we will go bankrupt, just from transportation costs. So, if we could work on a strategy in, for the future. But in the meantime, I would like to see a line item that transportation must be provided or the parents are transporting at cost. That way, it's very clear to us and the public.
One of the things is that Derek and I have been working as we've identified that you should have no more than maybe three to four percent of kids who are, and it should be the kids who are orthopedically handicapped, mostly, and are very severe, should have door-to-door. We have, I wanna say loosely without being exact, maybe eighty percent of our kids or even more than that on door-to-door. And that costs money because the bu- the bus is stopping and stopping and stopping. And not to mention, the kids are on the bus longer. So, Derek and I have looked at that and we don't wanna cause a ruckus by changing everybody's, um, uh, transportation. But we're doing it based, we're doing as the IEPs come up and we're putting some procedures in place. That's another procedure we're putting in place that we have identified and that will, that will reduce the cost.
The, the other thing is, I don't recall the FICMAT, uh, report stating that, uh, the high cost of transportation was going from reimbursing parents for driving their kids to the services.
They just said transportation costs.
I, I also do recall that in, in recent years, the district has also contracted or subcontracted transportation services other than utilizing our own, uh, transportation services. So, I, I think it's a number of factors, but, um, uh, the main important thing, I think the overall big picture here is, it's gonna cost us money to provide the services needed to our special education students. Um, and in order to comply with the laws, uh, in order to provide the students with the services that they're entitled to receive, um, we, we gotta pay. We have to pay, yes.
But we started looking at options to cut.
We wanna make sure, we're, we wanna make sure we're not doing what was also done in the past is where expenditures were, were made that probably didn't need to be made. You know, but as long as you guys are bringing it to us and, and, and something we need and the kids need, and let's...
And door-to-door is one of them that we really seriously need to look at.
Okay. As long as you're on.
Yeah.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item two. Approve to lease or add or purchase portable buildings for fiscal year two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Discussion.
Okay.
Uh, just a question because, uh, says the item in the agenda says that the price of leasing the portables will be paid by district and developer fees. Does that mean it is not going to be paid by Measure Y fees?
You're correct.
Are any portables being paid for by Measure Y fees at this time?
Best of my knowledge, none.
Okay, would you check on that for me?
Uh, I see the, the, my director fiscal said no.
Okay, great, 'cause that ate up a lot of money.
Yes, we, we can use Measure Y money to pay for the portable.
Any, anymore, any more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And lord knows, we need some portables at some of our schools.
Yes, we do.
Right.
This is a good thing. Uh, next up, we have item three, approve an agreement with Garcia and Associates to provide architectural services required for the relocation of five district-owned portable classroom buildings from Cali Elementary School to Casey Elementary School.
Yay.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
And I just have to say, I'm really glad to see that Casey's getting five portables because they desperately need it.
And I'm going to recuse myself. Um, I, I know the gentleman and, uh, I don't want a question of ethics coming in, so...
Alrighty, any more comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and one abstention. Next up, item four, accept the fiscal year two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen annual audit and financial report completed by Vicente Lloyd and Stutzman LLP. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in, well, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, we have item five, approve memorandum of understanding with the City of Rialto to provide two additional safety resource officers to serve all high schools and middle schools within the district beginning February first, two thousand fifteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen was the correction.
Awesome.
Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I just wanna ask, uh, Mohammed, this brings our total of resource officers to how many?
Uh, total, three.
We only have one now?
We have one.
We had three in the past and, and it was shrunk down to one and now we're going back to three.
Oh. Oh, okay.
I just saw something that I would, uh, like clarification on, please. We're, we're not at item eight yet. That is another, uh, resource officer from the City of San Bernardino.
Right.
And this one says to serve all high schools. I'm just looking for a difference here. One is for Rialto High, so-
Well, the City of San Bernardino will only help, uh, help pay for the, for the officer in their own city.
Their area, I understand that. I was just pointing that out and looking at it to clarify it for myself.
Alright. Um, so with item five, any more comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, item six, uh-
I must recuse myself.
Alrighty, uh, and that's to adopt a resolution number fourteen dash fifteen dash forty-five, excusing the absence of Board Member Joseph W. Martinez from the Wednesday, January seventh, two thousand fifteen, regular meeting of the Board of Education. Do we have a move?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Number seven, approve an agreement with Leadership Associates to conduct the superintendent's search.
So moved. Second.
Any, uh, questions or discussion, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number eight, approve a memorandum of understanding with the City of San Bernardino to provide one part-time safety resource officer to serve Rialto High School beginning February fifteenth, two thousand fifteen through, February first, two thousand fifteen through June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All, uh, do we have a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number nine, adopt resolution fourteen dash fifteen dash forty-six on local reserves cap, SB eight fifty-eight, section twenty-seven, uh, California Education Code four-two-one-two-seven dot oh-one. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion, and I'm glad we're-
That was three percent, right? That was three percent, is that?
Uh, that is actually a resolution, if I remember right.
May I-
Reserve cap?
Yes, may I, SB eight-five-eight, call for governance plan to re- lower the cap. We, as a school district, um, we've been invited by California School Board Association to, to appeal, to appeal this, not to lower the cap. We, as districts, uh, sometimes we have a local need and purpose to maintain the cap above three percent. And even though three percent does not pay for one week of your payroll, so, and that's the reason I bring this resolution to you as a governing board to adopt, so I can support, uh, send to the California School Board Association to appeal on behalf of a school district, okay?
Very appropriate.
Yeah.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a, uh, motion to approve item ten, the recommendations of the administrative hearing panel?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Comments, next is, uh, item L, comments from our interim superintendent.
Thank you, President Montez. Um, last night, we have, um, Middle College, um, ninth grade prep academy. Um, after working for a long time, I can say from the beginning of, uh, my arrival to Rialto, my, uh, dream, I know we had a Martin Luther King, uh, just, uh, a day, just a couple days ago, I had a dream to bring this program to Rialto and if I school districts, uh, dream came to reality, we are here. The program, uh, we have over a hundred parents came, um, it's called Parent Night, to receive the information about the program. It was outstanding, and I thank Peggy, Peggy is not here tonight, uh, and, and did an outstanding job, uh, sharing the information to the parents, interested parents, and their students were here last night, um, and received all the informations regarding the program. So it was a very exciting time, and, um, the cla- the class is going to begin February tw- twenty-third, uh, starting ninth grade, we call Prep Academy, going, uh, beginning, uh, tenth grade, they'll be called Middle College Program. What that means, at the end of their high school, uh, when they graduate, they're getting associate of art degree, which is two years, uh, junior college, and/or they'll get credit, if they didn't earn the, uh, A degree, they'll get credit towards going college, meaning they didn't meet all the requirement, uh, required by the community college. They will be getting at least, uh, earn, whatever credit they earn, there can be credit towards going four-year college. So at, at no time, a student didn't lost anything, it's like they gained something. So the program is a very exciting time, we're going to start teaching our, uh, the Valley College Professor will be taught those classes. Every high school, um, we'll have thirty-five students will be enrolled in the program, taught by the Valley College Professor, and, uh, we have, um, again, class is going to begin at every comprehensive high school. Three of, three of our comprehensive high school going to begin this class February twenty-thir- twenty-fifteen. And, um, we plan to have a hundred-five students enroll in the class, um, and through the selection process, we'll have at least thirty-five will be selected, uh, to be Middle College Program. Our goal to bring that, uh, number of students enrolled up to a hundred fifty students as moving forward. So this is a great news for Rialto and for school district. I call this groundbreaking for bringing a program, very exciting for me, exciting for our community and our students. As you can see, students are going to graduate, they're also enrolling in the high, college classes, uh, and they will be two years ahead of time. Meaning by the end of the high school, they have to finish another two years to finish their four years of college.
Uh, just a question, the, starting February twenty-third, right?
That's correct.
Now, are they getting both high school and Valley College credit?
You're correct.
Okay, so the semester will have been well into effect by February twenty-third.
So, Ms. O'Kelly, the February twenty-third is the Valley College credit, the class is actually two hours and ten minutes, so they're getting the Valley College credits, ten credits for that class, which will be transferable to the high school, but they can always use towards college.
Okay, so even though they're starting on a different date, they're gonna put in the right time, okay, alright.
Any further concern on this? The second item, I want to let you know that there's a good news, Governor's, uh, proposals. They like to continue funding our adult education program, sustain with the districts for one more year. As you remember, it, the program going away will be, uh, run to the c- community colleges. So Governor proposed to sustain the program and fund it to the school district one more year. So we're going to maintain our program for our community. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Islam. Next, uh, we'd like to, uh, would you like to start, Mr. Martinez?
I'm fine. Okay, thank you everyone for, uh, attending. Uh, looks like we're a, a small group in, in here tonight. Lots of movement, lots of change. Ms. Del Rio said, Norma, said that it would, uh, take money before we could implement the change, before we could actually bring things in-house, and that, that's true. Luckily, we have the people to do it, if not, we need to hire the people to do it. And it is cheaper to do in-house than it is to transport somebody or pay parents to transport, and do it at a different site other than within the district. So it's, it's one of those things where eventually, the vision is to have things as much as possible in-house and save cost. Then we can still spend that money on other needs of students. Um, but we do have, um, the needs, our students have needs, and one of the easy things in education is that we don't have the decision-making of who we serve. All that's part of, you know, California code and federal code. So as a Board member, we serve students, and that is a real joy. Spending the money is a real joy, finding the money is a real pain. Um, so, all that to just say, we're doing our best, bear with us during the time of change. Um, we do have several, um, committees and task forces available for you to serve on. And with this up, upcoming, uh, superintendent search, uh, definitely stay on our website for dates. If not, we will ask, um, probably the parent caller, the all-call, to send information out. And, um, there will be plenty of opportunity for your feedback in, as to what qualities you wish for in our next superintendent. When we were going through the Measure Y program and meeting at, at the high schools, only about forty people attended, and it was about the same forty people. So, please, um, this really is your chance to give input into steering your district, your funds. We want to meet your needs and your expectations as taxpayers. And we are expected to, and it is my joy to meet the students' needs. So thank you very much for just being here and, and serving your community, just for all you do, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Um, next, we'd like to go to Board Member, Mr. Joe Ayala.
Well, thank you, President Montez, uh, good evening, staff and community. Um, I'd like to begin by, uh, just sharing some comments, uh, in case, uh, anybody saw the State of the Union yesterday. Uh, one of the comments was that, uh, there's a goal of our president to assist with, uh, our community colleges not charging, charging zero to go to school. Unfortunately, some of our kids are coming out of college with huge, huge, uh, debt that is going to take them years, and they haven't even started their lives yet. And so, it, it's, it's, it's good to hear that. Uh, on the other hand, too, this may be an opportunity to look at our community colleges, and all of us here can rally in support of maybe finding ways to convert those commu- two-year colleges into four-year colleges. Uh, 'cause it, it makes it easier and creates more opportunities for our kids to find success, especially those who don't have the resources to travel long distances to continue with their education. We'll all benefit from those kinds of decision-making. Uh, moving right along, we also have kids who are behind, okay? And, uh, uh, we have San Bernardino, we have Colton, we have, uh, Montebello already, and, and from what I hear, we're moving in the direction to of addressing those concerns by connecting those kids who are not really connected to school by developing these, these smaller learning communities, uh, learning departments. Uh, it's, it's been called Link Learning, but this is worth a try. And if we find ways to put resources, additional resources in the hands of our kids, I think it's gonna pay off, uh, more than, than we realize. Uh, it's good to hear from our community, uh, you know, when they come up to the podium, sometimes we hear things that we like and sometimes we don't, but it's important to come up. And if you're a little bit shy, we'll support you. And if, if you're worried about saying something that there's gonna be retaliation, no, that's not what we're about here. So we thank you for your participation, we have great people here at this district, and again, I want to thank everybody for the opportunity to say a few words. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Board Member, Mr. Joe Ayala. Next, I'd like to go over to Board Clerk, Mrs. Deena Walker. Miss?
Uh, thank you, and I just want to be short and sweet, I am just glad to be here. Um, just finished coming off a weekend of, of celebrating, uh, Martin Luther King's birthday, and, uh, again, reiterating the vision that he had about children having opportunity. Um, so that, again, brings me to where we are today, and making sure that our students in our district have the most opportunity. Um, so, in the process of moving, uh, forward for our new superintendent, uh, or this is just an opportunity, and I want to make sure that everybody realizes that we all have a voice and a stake in this, and that it's taken very serious about having the input on who comes to lead us, um, to our next level in this district, so I'm excited about that. Um, and again, encourage everybody to participate in the process. Um, glad to hear that we're moving forward with the Middle College project, because that, again, is one of those signs of districts that excel and that perform well, they have either dual, dual, uh, dual enrollment programs or middle college programs. So these are opportunities for kids to be not only educated with a high school diploma, but also college education, so I'm excited about that, and if, uh, uh, Mr. Islam, if you can actually keep me and send me messages when you have next meetings around that, uh, I'd like to be kept informed about that. Um, so again, thank you again, and I look forward to continuing the work that we're doing here. Look forward to working with my board members, we've been moving pretty good, I'm excited. So, uh, thank you all for your support as well for the Board and our staff.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Walker. Next, we have, uh, Board Vice President, Mrs. Nancy O'Kelly.
Well, believe it or not, I don't have a whole lot to say tonight, but I want to thank you all for coming, as usual, we definitely appreciate you sitting here till the late hours with us. Um, I wanted to say that I'm very excited about the implementation of the Middle College program. I think it's gonna be of great benefit to our students. And I, I do believe that if, uh, the President can work out a way for community college to be free for our students, uh, we'll see a big difference. Right now, a lot of them graduate from high school and they're lost, and they can't find a job, or if they do, it's a minimum wage job, and they, they can't even afford community college, so they just sort of wander until something happens, and we hope, uh, that most of them can get on a path to success through that program. Um, I'm excited about working with Leadership Associates for the superintendent's search. They're a highly reputable company, and their plan sounds great, and I think they're going to lay out a very, uh, con- do a very professional and, um, inclusive, uh, search for us, and hopefully bring us some wonderful candidates. And other than that, that's all for tonight, so thank you, and have a good week.
Thank you, Vice President, Ms. Mrs. O'Kelly. Um, I, I, I also don't have very much tonight. Um, I just want to say, uh, thank you, uh, to everybody here tonight. Um, for those of you who plan on, uh, giving input, providing input, and engaging with, uh, the search firm, um, I, uh, we welcome you, this Board welcomes you and encourages you to, uh, participate. And, uh, just to, just to reiterate some of the things I said earlier, um, we want the process to be fair, we want, uh, encourage everyone and anyone uh, in and outside of this district to apply. Um, and if they do, of course, they, uh, should not participate in any of the process, uh, for the search, but if they don't, then they're more than welcome to, to participate. And I do want to, uh, thank, uh, Mr. Islam, our interim superintendent, and, uh, all of the cabinet members, um, and, uh, the administration. Um, we've been making tremendous, tremendous strides, um, recently, and, um, to piggyback on what one of the parents said up at the podium, we've come a long way, we really have. Um, from, uh, where we've been to where we are today, and, uh, in the, uh, process of selecting a permanent superintendent, we hope to even go further, uh, and beyond. So with that, um, good evening, thank you again, buenas noches. One more thing, one more thing. I forgot, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Saeda. Um, we'd like to inform our viewing audience that Mr. Douglas Junker, a twenty-six veteran, twenty-six-year veteran teacher of Rialto Unified School District who retired in two thousand ten, passed away on Saturday, January sixteen, two thousand fifteen. Mr. Junker taught at Morgan, Henry, and Hugh Banks Elementary Schools, and also Rialto and J Hugh Middle Schools. Mr. Junk- Junker was fifty-nine years old. Mr. Junker's public service will be held on Friday, January twenty-third, two thousand fifteen, at three P.M. at the Mount, Mountain View Cemetery and Mortuary Chapel. On behalf of the RUSD Board of Education, our heartfelt thoughts and prayers are with the Junker family. On behalf of the RUSD Board of Education, our heartfelt thoughts and prayers are with the Junker family. Um, and if we could just have a moment of silence for Mr. Junker. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.